No pressure. We'll call the meeting no order. Madam Clerk, if you agree to the roll call.
Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Moore. Ms. Pace Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher. Mr. Shiverbecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
And Mr. Stone.
Present.
Seven council members present, one absent.
Okay, we have Pastor Aaron White here from Presbyterian Manor. Or Presbyterian Church. Of course I have it, wow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually also serve with the mission board at the Manor, and so I don't mind be identified with them. Friends, I come tonight to offer a word of prayer. I invite you to bow your heads and lift up your hearts with me if you're inclined to do so. Holy God, in your infinite wisdom and inescapable love, you have created us and bound us in community with one another. As we live into our relationships with our neighbors, you call us to particular vocations of service for the mutual benefit of your people. This evening, as the City Council of Fulton convenes this meeting, I pray that you would bless all who have been called to positions of service and of leadership. Give to the members of this council minds to rightly discern what is good and wise for the benefit of our city and its people. Give to the members of this council hearts to act out of love and compassion for the citizens of Fulton. Give to the members of this council the courage to decisively speak and act, not for what is popular, but for what is right. As those who are gathered together in this chamber speak to the business before this body and hear others do likewise, I pray that you would give us confidence in one another so that we might all trust that we work not for our individual benefit, but for what will prosper all of your people. Lord God, may the abundance of your blessings pour out upon those who serve in our city's administration, finance, and human resource departments, in our city's fire department and police department, in our city's public works and utilities departments, in our city's parks and recreation department, and in our city's planning and protective services department. Give all the citizens of Fulton an appreciation for each person whose particular work is performed for the benefit of our community. Guide the work of all who serve on the boards and the commissions of this city as they give special attention to particular needs and concerns in Fulton. Finally, great God, I ask that you would instill in the heart of each resident a spirit of responsible citizenship so that each one of us might recognize that you have enabled each of us with the ability to improve our community, to care for our neighbors, and to demonstrate extravagant hospitality to all who are blessed to pass through our town. May Fulton and its people ever more closely resemble the community that you have intended for your people. All this we humbly asking in your holy name, oh Lord God Almighty. Amen.
Amen.
As you're able to, I invite you now to turn and face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
If there's anyone here wishing to speak, please give us your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes.
I think we know this guy.
Yeah, I've been here before. My name's Patrick Payne. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about Parks and Recreation first time. Are we on the clock yet?
We are on the clock, and could you give us your address, Mr. Payne? I apologize.
Fourth ward.
All right.
I'm here to talk about the swimming pool in Parks and Rec. Also give you a little history, hand out, which you'll get a little bit later. Show you a few of my photos. Almost all the history you'll be getting is from the King of Callaway Historical Society. Some will be photocopies of local paper by whatever name it was going by that year. Most of the colored photos will be mine. About every five or six years, I visit city government. I've been doing this since before Mr. Moore was on the City Council, so, a while. Normally, I just observe. I sit back in the back room and take notes. This year, I'm going to advocate for a few issues. When you observe, you just watch without affecting the outcome. When you advocate, you present information to affect the outcome. I won't have any mobs with pitchforks sitting out here. Be pounding on the tables. Hopefully, they'll help you make decisions and give you directions, and help you give directions to the city staff. Why can't I do this? Any citizen can. In Parks and Rec, I have a background with the American Red Cross. You have any questions about me, ask Mr. Johnson. He should have a pretty good profile on me by now. If you have any questions about history, ask Mr. Moore. Besides the council, I'm also trying to visit each standing committee and the certain functions of city government. Couple of weeks ago, when nothing really was going on as far as meetings, I got to visit municipal court and watch a bench trial for a parking ticket, which brought back fond memories. The only thing that might have been more exciting would have been an animal control case. I have about 30 minutes of information that I'll be giving to you. You're about to start the budget process, first the capital budget and the operating budget. I will not, I will try not to break the normal council routine. I will be gone before the next election cycle. I may leave earlier if the national election cycle gets really interesting. Now, we'll actually start the swim pool, which I think I've mentioned twice last time. That city pool is not going to last forever. It was designed and planned when I was in college, and disco was still new. It is about on its third life. It started as a year-round pool with a bubble over the 25 millimeter length for the cold-weather months. Then it became a heated pool in the summer that leaked water. Now it's, now it's a non-heated pool that still leaks water. It was put into service about 1981, and this is 2019. I'm here to give you information not only on the pool, but also on other aspects of city's Parks and Recreation Department. Where I give you the information, the city staff will have it. Hopefully, there will be no surprises. Now, last time I gave you a trivia question about where the old pool was. I'm sure you forgot it completely, which is normal. The first city pool that the city actually used was at the ice plant on Hickman Avenue. It was an outdoor tank that they used to freeze ice in. The second city pool that I could find so far, I'm about ready to read microfilm at the library, are the Veterans Park Pool and the Carver Park Pool. Veterans Park became an animal shelter, and now it's nice green grass. Carver Park began a tennis court, and then became basketball courts. Okay, if the clerk will hand out the material if she hasn't already.
And I will let you know you have about one minute remaining.
Yeah, I'm smiling at you. Just like I said I would. Anything here you can thumb through here at your leisure. Wanted to show you a picture of Coach Alt, Richard Alt. He was instructor, coach at Westminster, years and years. Acted not only in the Red Cross, but also in the city Parks and Recreation Department. You'll be hearing more about him later on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak to the council? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got, looks like, five items. The approval of the city council meeting minutes of May 28th, approval of the city council meeting minutes of June 11th, approval of director of administration report, reappointment of Wayne Bill to the park board, and acceptance of the Parks and Utility Board, April 22nd, 2019. Is there anything that needs to be pulled off? Mr. Mayor? Questions on the director of administration report? Okay, we'll pull that off. Okay. Anything else? I'll call for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That's approved, and let's discuss the DOA. On page five from the Finance Department, it talks about 101 households were shut off. Is that normal? That's a lot. Or is that because we waited until the winter was over?
Sometimes it's more.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We do two shut-offs a month. We do the first shut-off for people who are past due, have received a shut-off notice.
How many is that? How many delinquent notices?
Oh, how many delinquent notices do we send out? Eight, nine hundred? And everyone who receives, everyone who receives a delinquent notice, it receives a penalty on their account. We have a second shut-off, which is typically right after the first of the month, and that is for people who have made arrangements. And the number, total number of shut-offs a month can vary greatly, depending on if there's energy assistance available for electric and gas payments, depending on the temperatures. Sometimes the temperatures are too high or too low to allow us to shut off.
Wow. Okay, thank you. Next question. I guess this is for Clay. Uh, this is page, well, page eight's where the golf course stuff is. We recently had Missouri Golf Association Junior Tournament out at Tanglewood.
Yes.
Have you gotten any feedback from the NGA or from our pro as to how that went?
I think it went well. They started out with a big group on Monday. They cut that in half on Tuesday, and they narrowed it down through the week, and they finished on Thursday. MGA is real busy this time of year. Each week, they're on to the next event, so we haven't got a lot of feedback from them, other than when they were there. I think they were pleased with the course, and a lot of the parents that joined the kids, they were, they were very complimentary of the course.
So, possibility of NGA coming back to Tanglewood?
I believe so, yeah. I think it's, I think it's beneficial for us to get young golfers out to our course. So hopefully, as they get older and they, they move on in life, they'll, they'll keep coming back and playing our course.
Also, it kind of advertises Tanglewood to the whole state, really.
It does. It does.
Okay, good, thank you. I guess the last question I have is for Kyle. The credit card system at the airport, is it fixed? Because there's one spot that says it's fixed and one spot that says it's not.
Should be fixed now.
Okay, so the debit card problems, taking care of the firmware?
Right, it was a, it was a drawn-out process, trying to figure out what was wrong. But to my knowledge, it is fixed and operating as it should right now.
Okay, very good, thank you. That takes care of my questions. Cool. Anyone else? So, yeah, do we, want a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the director of administration's report as presented.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes. And we'll ask Ms. Holschlag to present our financial report, please, or answer questions about it.
I'll start off by telling you that we have four months of sales tax recorded, and our collections are up 4.5%, which is, yeah. Which is good. Yes. And I will just hit the highlights. We have received the money from the VW Trust. I think it was $50,000 for the street department to reimburse us for the dump truck they purchased and 74, 75 for the roll-off truck for solid waste. You may have noticed in the sewer department that the capital outlay is an addition rather than a subtraction. It's not an error. After successfully negotiating with the contractor, is that the terminology you would prefer? We settled on paying them $150,000. There had been more than that previously expensed. Some of it was held in retainage. So that money had to, had to reduce our amount of capital outlay, so it had to be added back in. And we did have a slight loss in sewer this month, only because they had a $41,000 expense for repairs to the VAC truck.
To the? Oh, the VAC truck, not the, not the sweeper, I'm sorry.
No, to the VAC truck.
That's branded.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Here, not all.
Motion to approve the financial report.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no. Thank you. So, moving on to the more discussion on Parks and Rec, is there anything new to report on that, Clay? Not, not really. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I'm thinking maybe you're on the agenda.
Oh. Oh, is this the original one?
That's okay.
Yeah, we pulled that off. Could be updated.
It's from the meeting, when we put the agenda together.
Okay.
The one you have is correct.
I'm back on track, sorry everyone.
That's okay.
Okay. Yeah, there was no unfinished business to discuss, so we're on new business. 10A, is that right? Presentation and acceptance of the 2018 audit.
It is my pleasure to introduce Heidi Chick and Amanda Schultz. They are partners with Williams Keepers. So they will give you a brief presentation on our audit.
Kathy, did you say brief?
So we appreciate the opportunity to come and discuss the results of the audit of the 2018 financial statements. I do promise we are not going to go through this nice big book. I do encourage you all to read through it, though. You should have a report in front of you called the summary report. That is what we're going to go through. It hits the highlights of all the reports that we've issued. If you do have any questions on, on any of the specific reports, let me know. If you haven't had a chance to go through it and you have questions later, reach out to Kathy, or go ahead and reach out to us. We'll get whatever questions you might have answered. So if you can find the summary report, that's what we're going to go through. One of the reasons that we do an audit, besides there's outside requirements, is to help you with your governance and oversight function. That's why it's really important that we do go at least through the highlights of those reports, so you can kind of know overall how things went. The city actually issues what's called a comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR for short. So if you hear the term CAFR, it's talking about the nice big fat book. It actually goes beyond what you're required to do. There's, the things that you're required to follow are called generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP. That's what you have to follow. When you do a CAFR, though, you, you go beyond that. There's an entity called Government Finance Officers Association, and they layer on additional requirements on top of GAAP. So when you issue a CAFR, not only do you follow the GAAP requirements, but you also follow those GFOA requirements. Part of it is obviously you follow GAAP, you follow their requirements, but also that your final product has to be easily readable. You don't have to be a scientist or CPA to actually read the financial statements and understand. So not only does it meet the requirements, but, but it's easily readable by the citizens. If you look at their, the financial section is the part that is required. So when you go in the book and you see the section Financial Section, that's what's required. The introductory section, the statistical section are the additional requirements under GFOA. The introductory section just has some basic information, but really, the interesting part is the statistical section, because it has 10 years' worth of data on all different aspects of the city. So revenue, expenditures, just all different kinds of things. It's really interesting to go back there and kind of see where the city's been and kind of where it's headed. When citizens look at this, or a bonding agency, or grantor agency, they consider a CAFR a sign of excellence in reporting, because you, you have gone above and beyond what you're required to do, and you've put forth a whole lot of information about the city. So I think that's a very positive reflection on the city that they take. I went back and looked, and you've gotten the certificate, you got the certificate from the GFOA, the 17 financial statements, and you've gotten it every year since 1986 for every eligible year. So for a long time, you've been following those, those high standards. That's really a good thing. Within the, the financial section are the financial statements. Those are the ones, like I said, that are required by GAAP. In there, you'll see an auditor's opinion. We issued an unmodified or clean opinion. That's the best opinion you can get. What that means is your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with GAAP for governmental entities. So that's the best thing that you want. And bottom line, what that means is anyone that looks at your financial statements, whether they're looking at the numbers or they're looking at the disclosures, they can rely on the information in there and know that they're presented appropriately, they're complete and accurate. So really, that's really why you do an audit, so your citizens, or grantors, or bonding agencies, or whoever looks at your financial statements, know that they can rely on those. Management is responsible for the preparation of the financial statements. We actually do prepare the financial statements, because we have all the software. It's really easy for us to do it. But we do submit it to the city management for them to go through and review and approve the financial statements. So we help in the process, but at the end of the day, it's management's responsibility to make sure that those are in accordance with GAAP. When we do an audit, we don't look at every transaction. We'd be here forever if we did. We go through what we call a risk assessment process to figure out where we're going to spend our time. We look at the account balances, we look at transactions, we look at internal control, who does what, what went on during the, in the city during the year, and kind of decide at the end of the day, where do we want to focus our attention? Where potentially could there be problems in the financial statements? And that's really where we focus our time. So there's a risk assessment process that we go through. Also, as part of the audit, we look at the appropriateness of the accounting principles. We look at estimates to make sure that they're reasonable, just to make sure everything in the final product is the way it's supposed to be. One of the reasons that this is so thick, and it's just a reminder, you've probably heard this in the past, is there's actually two complete sets of financial statements in the CAFR. One is called entity-wide or government-wide. It puts all the funds of the city in one place, and includes all your assets, including capital assets. It includes all your long-term liabilities, such as debt. So it's the one place in the financial statement most like the rest of the world. So when you look at that, that it's got everything for the city in one place. The other set of statements are called the fund financial statements. Those are what you're typically used to seeing, because it breaks out your funds. The fund financial statements are subdivided into two groups. One is called governmental funds. Those are the funds that are primarily supported by taxes or similar type of activity. And then there's the enterprise or proprietary funds, which are primarily supported by user charges. So I encourage everyone, if you go through the CAFR, look at the table of contents. It'll help keep you straight on where you're at in that, in that big book. You know, for me to look at it, it's pretty easy, because it's what I do for a living. But for someone that's not used to it, the table of contents really does help keep you straight on where things are at. We've got a couple sets of highlights, just for a three-year comparison, just so you can kind of see what the three years look like. There's a section in the CAFR called Management's Discussion and Analysis. It's on pages four through 10. So I highly encourage everyone, even if you don't go through the whole rest of the CAFR, that is the part that you definitely want to read, because it tells the story of what went on during 2018 compared to 18, back to 2017. It has financial highlights of the funds, it has looking forward type of information. So if you don't look at anything else, look at the Management's Discussion and Analysis. And that will address the changes from 2017 to 2018. Any questions on the actual financial statements themselves? There is a section in there called Single Audit. You get a single audit because you have federal funds. It's nice to have federal funds to spend. So anytime you spend more than $750,000 of federal funds, you are required to undergo what's called a single audit. It's a federal requirement in, in order to get that money. And what happens is, the federal government puts additional requirements on you, on how you handle that money, and it puts additional requirements on us as auditors, both in our training and what we have to do to test those federal funds. Part of the result of having the single audits, we issued two additional reports. One is a report on internal control and compliance over financial reporting, and the second is a report on how well you handle major programs. When you look at the financial reporting report, there's no material weaknesses noted. We didn't note any non-compliance. Obviously, a clean report. And when we tested your major federal programs, we also gave an unmodified or clean opinion on your compliance with those programs. So obviously, doing really well with federal funds. So any questions before I turn it over to Madam? Any questions at all on the CAFR, the single audit, or any part of that? Okay, if not, I'm going to turn it over to Madam, and she's going to go through the rest of the reports.
On the next page of the summary report, we discuss the auditor's communication letter, which is another report that we issue as part of the audit. This letter consists of comments about the audit process that we're required to communicate to those charged with governance. In the city's case, that is the city council, who serves that role. We issue this report each year, so I was just going to touch on the highlights this evening. We didn't note any transactions that we considered to be unusual or significant, and there was no change in accounting policies during the year. So essentially, what this means is that no balances or transactions were accounted for or reported differently in the financial statements this year as compared to prior years. We did provide some information in this letter about some upcoming changes to accounting standards that will be effective in the next two calendar years. So the city will need to take a look at those standards and evaluate them for impact.
Yay.
As Heidi mentioned previously, we do take a look at the estimates affecting the financial statements, since they're presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and found them to be reasonable in relation to the financial statements. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear, and all of the required disclosures supporting the financial statements are included. We found the accounting records to be in good order and did not propose any significant adjustments as a result of our audit procedures, other than adjustments for GASB 68, which is related to the pension amounts, and that's consistent with prior years. And we're always pleased to report that we didn't have any disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues. We had no difficulties in performing our audit, and we felt we received full cooperation from the city staff. All right, last but not least is our management letter. This is the third report that we issue as part of the financial statement audit. And this letter is used to communicate any findings we may have about the city's internal controls. So when we perform a financial statement audit, the purpose is to give an opinion on the financial statements and not on internal controls. But if we identify any findings or have any recommendations related to internal controls, certainly that rise to a level of a material weakness, we would report them in this letter to the city council. Based on the limited procedures we performed on internal controls, we did not identify any material weaknesses in the city's internal controls that we felt warranted in this letter. Are there any questions about those two letters or reports? Okay, I'll turn it back over to Heidi then for some concluding remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, new economic standards on that New Year's ban of those pension standards, which totally changed everything, so. They're just a little bit minor. I just want to emphasize, we do appreciate the opportunity to do the audit. We definitely appreciate all the cooperation we get. It takes a lot of effort on the city side to get ready for us, pull documents, answer all our questions, and whoever we talk to works really well with us. We do appreciate the opportunity. Like I said, if you have any questions later, reach out to Kathy, or we're easy to find, just someone to ask. Otherwise, we do appreciate the opportunity. Anything else we can answer for you while we're here?
Do we have a copy, or electronic copy of this report as well as the CAFR?
Yes. Kathy should have electronic copies of all the reports.
And therefore, to be transparent, we might post that on our website.
I think you always do the CAFR. A lot, a lot of cities do. It's public information, so.
Awesome.
Any other questions? Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if we need to tell Kathy thank you? Well, absolutely. Good job.
Of course.
Okay, moving on to presentation.
And actually, just really quickly, if we can get a motion in a second to accept the financial audit.
Motion to accept the financial audit.
Thank you.
That's okay.
I make a motion to accept the financial.
I make a motion to accept the final audit at tonight's meeting.
We're going to make you the second because Mr. Schibberdecker was on it.
Well, I think you all are talking at the same time. So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes.
That's awesome.
So we'll move on to the capital budget. Fine, fine. You're on deck, sir, or you're up the bat.
How you doing? How you doing? Well, as the letter says and is accordingly put in your agenda, we do this every year. It's a charter requirement, and it's mainly a wish list that we get from the departments. We kind of put it together with a summary in the front, then broken down by department, and the rest of the report. So, any questions?
The parts and rec budget. Has nothing in there about a rec center or tennis and baseball fields. I assume that's one because we don't know what the costs are going to be, and two, because they haven't been approved? Is that? Or does that oversight, or? I mean, all's a big oversight.
Yeah.
I either let Bill or Clay respond to that.
I guess my answer to that is the document that is in front of you is required by the charter for the mayor to, the mayor's actually giving this to you. Robert's not. It is, as Robert mentioned, it's a wish list of items that the department heads would like to have over the next few years. I would like to stress to you that just because something is in the document, showing up for 2020, does not mean that it will be in the budget that you guys will be seeing in a few months when you approve the 2020 operating and capital budget.
And vice versa.
And on the other hand, 2020 approved annual budget, that do not show up in here. This, so this is an exercise for the department heads to go through and identify and set out some long-term goals that they would like to see us work towards. So as far as the rec center and the ball fields not being in here, I do not see that as being a positive or a negative. It could have, could have easily been in the 2019 as well, but it wasn't in the 19, so I do not, I really don't see it as an oversight or a, or.
Okay, that's fine.
One way or the other.
Yeah.
Because it's a.
We don't even know what they're going to cost yet.
We do not.
Right, we're kind of in limbo.
Okay.
Okay. Just to comment, even though it is kind of a wish list in that this is a document that's going to be used as we develop different budgets over the next few years. And I think there's some opportunity within some of these departments to really look at some of their repeat needs. You know, there's a lot of stuff that was put in the 2020 wish list that aren't necessarily then again repeated in 2022, 2023 that obviously will be. I mean, there's things that we're going to need to buy every year, every other year replace. And I think it'd be a good exercise for the department directors to start really looking at that. Okay, what is the expected life of this? Is it, if it's two years, I need to be looking at putting that in every two years. That way, you're not reinventing your wish list every year and trying to figure out what's going to break in just a few months. You're actually looking at that sustainment.
Does, isn't it?
Yeah, things were out.
Okay. But there's no, there's no action necessary? As I said, the mayor's, it's required that the mayor give this to you. Good job, Mayor.
Hey, I had nothing to do with this, so don't let him kid you. So looking, looking at this, it kind of helps to look backwards a few years to see maybe what was asked for over and over again and maybe is getting brushed aside. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, I mean, yes.
We have access to that information? That might be kind of nice to.
Yeah, 2019, 18, 17 budgets.
Anything else for Mr. Boone? Cutting. Thanks, sir. Council concerns. I'll start to my left. Councilwoman Seibacher.
I don't have anything today.
Councilwoman Simmons.
One item. The automatic speed limit sign that we have on Wood Street.
Yes.
Either isn't working quite right, or it's in the wrong spot. When you drive down Wood Street, you can see the laser, whatever it is, the sensor start blinking at you, but it, you're pretty close when it starts blinking, but you actually get parallel to the sign before it actually says, you know, you're going fine, or you're going too fast, or.
Kyle, we'll look, we'll, yeah. I actually noticed that today, too. It's twisted out towards the street.
And that could be it, too. I don't know if it's the trees interfering with it or whatever. When we had it there before, it was working great.
I actually, it's kind of pointed almost at St. Louis as well. So you can, maybe they were trying to cover two streets at once or something. I don't know, but it needs a little, it needs an adjustment.
Thank you. That's it.
Councilwoman Reclu.
First, I just want to say the parade was awesome. I had more fun. That was so much fun, and I think we had a very good turnout. I was glad to be part of it. I think the city really appreciated this, all the people in the city. I think, and it was fun, and I just want to thank all the people that got together and all the hard work the city, all of your employees did. And I'm just real proud to be part of the city in that. Thank you.
A lot of work went into getting recognized for all the work they did.
I know.
So moving on, Councilman Stone.
Just thank you for the, the street fair, the city's support of the street fair also. I mean, I saw a lot of very positive police presence there, public safety presence. You know, there were a couple of incidents, and as, I was standing up on a trailer and was able to see a whole lot, and there were a lot of things that were just quickly taken care of and, and without incident. It was excellent. That's it.
Yeah, and the weather was not too bad either. It didn't get as hot as they said. Pretty fun weekend. Councilman Brown.
I'm good.
You're good. Councilwoman Paceknot.
John and I did receive an email from someone concerned about Sixth Street House again. I know that we're still in the middle of everything, but.
We've had a mediation session with the attorney and the individual. I don't know if you've noticed, but there's a dumpster outside that place right now is going to sit there for one week. Where he has, needs to show significant improvement in the time period, or it'll be going back to court. If he's, if he's able to make the corrective repairs in a reasonable amount of time, we were able to agree on a schedule. If he sticks to the schedule, everything will be done and over and happy. If he doesn't, we'll go back to court.
Do we have a timeframe?
Two, two weeks. Oh, and one. He has two weeks to find a contractor, and then two weeks to get estimates, and then.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Councilman Schibberdecker.
Everything I had is already in said. Thank you.
Fantastic. Resolutions. Councilwoman Seibacher, if you would present Resolution 3345 tonight?
Yes, sir. Resolution number 3345. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to the national infrastructure investments, better utilizing investments to leverage development, also known as build, grant, receipt of those grant monies, authorizing the city's in-kind and monetary match. I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 3345 at this council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this?
This is the same grant we applied for a year ago, or a little over a year ago. It was unsuccessful, so the application was pretty, pretty easy. But we're just going to go for it again, which would allow for some of the engineering, for pretty much a complete engineering and design of a new downtown, pretty much building to building. I think so, the sidewalks, curb, and gutter, some storm drainage, bricks of some sort. Okay? Thank you.
Is there any more discussion? Any questions on this? We have a motion in a second. I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
No, opposed, no. That resolution passes, 3345. Thank you. Ordinances first reads. We have Bill number 1547. Councilman Schibberdecker.
Yes, sir. Bill number 1547, an ordinance authorizing amendments to the city of Fulton budget for the fiscal year 2018 as outlined in Article 8, Financial Procedures, Section 8.8, Amendments After Adoption, Paragraph C, Transfer of Appropriations, Fulton City Charter, and Establishing Effective Date. I make a motion, we advance Bill number 1547 for second reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. This is a pretty basic thing that we do every year. Are there any questions or comments on this?
I think based on HoShlag's report, she's welcome to come up and take over if she wants to, but if you look at the very back page, the very top sentence, oh, which I think I would have had, anyway. Overall, we had a good year. As a city, we had a good year. We were, showed an increase of over $200,000. But the budget adjustment is only required for those funds that overspend. The city council gives the staff permission to spend up to the budget level. It's been authorized. But if we go over that amount, then we need to come back and do this budget adjustment so you can retroactively approve money that's been spent. Okay? But that, the budget adjustment does not take into consideration the funds that are under budget, that didn't spend as much as they were budgeted. That's why I always like to lead the first sentence with, how did we do overall? To kind of put you at ease that even though we overspent X number of dollars, we underspent X plus dollars. So we had, it's about every year we end up in a better cash position at the end of the year than we started out in. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Excellent. So we have a motion in a second. I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That'll pass on for second reading tonight.
Bill number 1547, an ordinance authorizing amendments to the city of Fulton budget for the fiscal year 2018 as outlined in Article 8, Financial Procedures, Section 8.8, Amendments After Adoption, Paragraph C, Transfer of Appropriations, Fulton City Charter, and Establishing Effective Date. I make a motion, we advance Bill 1547 for third reading at our next scheduled meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any questions on this? I'll ask for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Bill number 1547 passes for a third reading. Okay, moving on for our third reading tonight, Bill number 1540. Councilman Brown.
An ordinance, Bill number 1540, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relationship to applications for federal and state assistance for the Elton Hensley Memorial Airport to assist with new hangars and approving the city's local match of not to exceed 10% of the budgeted project, budget, projected cost, excuse me.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Oh, I make, I'm.
There we go, that motion.
I make a motion to place Bill 1540 for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this?
My discussion is about the same as it has been. I don't think it's good with, for the citizens of Fulton to spend money, cit, money. Free money is not really free money. Free money, even though it's grant money, it's still our taxpayers' dollars that we're getting, that we're receiving, so. I don't think it's a good financial decision from the city's perspective, from my perspective, anyway. And that's.
Sticking to your game.
Hundred percent.
All right. Anyone else have discussion on this, or? Okay, if not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no.
No.
Have five and two, five yeses and two no's. That, that'll pass on for final passage. You've all heard the, how do I do this now, Courtney?
That's okay. You've heard Bill 1540 read three times.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so you read it, heard it three times. Madam Clerk, if you would ask for roll call to say yes or no.
Okay. Ms. Paceknot.
Yes.
Ms. Reclu.
No.
Ms. Seibacher.
Yes.
Was that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schibberdecker.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Stone.
Yes.
And Mr. Brown.
No.
Five council members affirmative, two opposed, one absent.
So Bill number 1540 passes, and hopefully, we'll move forward with that and get a good, good project out of that deal. Thank you. Announcements. Our next meeting will be held Tuesday, July 9th, at 2019. A work session will be on that agenda at 6:30 with regular session to follow at 7:00. And just real quickly, I understand this is our final night for Jenny from the paper to be here, so we thank her for.
Thank you.
We wish you the best.
Yes, we do.
We're clapping because she did such a good job on this year.
No, that's not true.
Not at all.
We just don't want to see an exposé in the paper tomorrow.
Well, I bet there were one or two.
Does anyone, does anyone else have announcements?
Do you invite everybody to come out for the Fourth of July Veterans Parade?
Oh, thank you, Matt. We have probably 1,000 popsicles left over.
Oh, cool.
So the plan is to let the guys eat as they want between now and the Fourth of July Parade, but I think there's going to, we might have heard, they might try to put the, go back in the Fourth of July Parade and that popsicles again.
That would be wonderful.
Very cool. Very cool.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. All right.